Afternoon, everybody. Please remain standing while the Mayor's Chaplain offers prayers.
God, our Heavenly Father, the councillors of the city of Preston are of different colour, race, gender, faith or none, and background, gathered in this council chamber to carry out the duty that has been bestowed upon them by the electorate of Preston. We pray that the business of today is debated with dignity, respect for each other's opinions and political point of view. We also pray that they will listen attentively to others, for fear they may miss something of importance. We ask you to guide all involved in today's business, that they put the good of our city first and leave any personal interest behind at the chamber door. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Barwise. Please be seated, everybody. Item one is Mayor's announcements. There are no plans for a fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off or on silent. You can check now. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business? Pardon? If you want to speak, stand up. Thanks. Now, members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress, for Part A items only, and as long as no disruptions cause to the meeting. Anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Firstly, I have the sad duty to inform you of the deaths of two colleagues. Mr John Camden worked in the council's housing team in housing advice for 33 years, from August 1989 until December 2022, when John retired due to ill health from his role as Housing Auctions Manager at 60 years of age. John sadly died following a long illness on Saturday, June 15, 2024. I would like to send the council sincere condolences to his family and friends. Details of John's funeral will be posted on City Space, and I am sure it will be well attended by colleagues. I also have to advise of the death of former councillor and a member of the Select Vestry, Mrs June Dodd. June was elected as a Liberal Democrat Member in 2004, until she joined the Conservative Party in 2006. June left the council in 2008, and she was a lifetime Member of the Preston Parish Church Select Vestry Middle Division. On behalf of the council, I send condolences to June's family and friends at this sad time. Can I now ask that we stand for a minute's silence in respect of our former colleagues? Thank you. Now, as everyone is aware, councillor Borrow has resigned since the last meeting. Former councillor David Borrow was a Member of the council for a total of 23 years. He was leader of the council from 1992 to 1994, and again from 1995 to 1997. And he had a break from the council from 1997 to 2010, due to his election as MP for South Ribble. David was also Mayor of this council from 2019 to 2021, having done two years in office because of the Covid-19 pandemic. David sat on an abundance of committees during his service, sitting as Chair and Vice-Chair of several, as well as being appointed to at least 29 outside bodies and five public bodies during his time here. I would therefore like to take this opportunity to minit our thanks to David for his many years of public service, the experience he brought us and the leadership he provided during his time at the council. I wish David well for the future. Now, depending how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Item two, declarations of interest. Yes, councillor Handless?
Yes, Mr Mayor, it's on item seven. I will be declaring a prejudicial interest, as I'm a licensee and holder, licence premises in the town, in the city, sorry, so I will be leaving the room. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other? Interest, no? Right, we'll move on to item three. Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting. Can I advise that due to a computer error, councillor Ward is missing from the list of those present on the 15th of May? However, councillor Ward was in fact in attendance at the last meeting. We all listened to his introductory speech. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record with the addition of councillor Ward's presence being added? We have a glitch with the software or something. Are we all agreed? Thank you. Item four is questions of members of the public. There's been one question submitted by a Mr Nakuda, who is not with us today. A copy of the question is enclosed with your agendas. Unfortunately, I will read out his speech. Unfortunately, councillor Afzal cannot be here in person today to deliver a response to his question. However, councillor Khan will deliver the response, prepared by councillor Afzal. So, the question is as follows. The Muslims of Preston have a long and proud history in this city and have contributed significantly to sectors such as health, business and community work. However, the growing Muslim community faces challenges as planning policies constrain their places of worship. This is evident when the community requires new, larger or local worship spaces, leading to issues with the city's planners. All places of worship are crucial in supporting communities, as shown during the Covid-19 pandemic. They should be supported by proactive council policies, and the council's duties under the Equalities Act and the substantial case law arising from it, which is not currently the case. What reassurance can the council and party leaders give to the Muslim and other faith communities of Preston, that they are safe, can prosper and are free to worship? And how will the council ensure support for all faith communities to thrive and practise their faith freely in this city? So that was what Mr Nakuda was going to come and run by us. And now can I ask councillor Khan to deliver councillor Afzal's answer?
Yes, Mr Mayor, as Mr Nakuda's not here, I mean, there is a response from councillor Afzal and also myself, but we can send that response if you so wish. But if the chamber wishes me to read out councillor Afzal's response and mine, I can do so.
Would you like to give it verbally, councillor Khan?
Happy to do so. So the first response is from councillor Afzal, that she's put together a response to Mr Nakuda's question. And she writes, "The council is keen to support the local Muslim community with new developments to address their growing need. With any new developments, a balance needs to be struck with meeting need and the impact of such developments may have upon the surrounding residential community to ensure residents are not unduly affected. In recent years, the local planning authority have approved new places of worship on Bent Road, Carlton Drive, Lytham Road, Ribbleton Avenue and Dertin Lane. The new mosque at Dertin Lane was the subject of an application called in by the Secretary of State, and the council gave evidence to fully support the development. Furthermore, churches have been approved in previously allocated employment land use areas at Helen Court and Deepdale Street. In most recent cases, planning permission is granted with conditions and obligations to ensure that the unacceptable impacts, such as noise and disturbance, during the early morning or late at night are mitigated, so development successfully integrates into the existing area. As the city and its communities continue to grow, need changes, and in some cases, existing facilities may require amendments, and the council will work with communities to agree what is possible. The council is willing to consider amendments to planning permission on new alternative sites, but again, same balance needs to be struck with meeting need and mitigating adverse impacts upon the surrounding residents. The local planning authority offer a pre-application advice service to discuss such issues before a new application is submitted. The council would like to encourage faith groups to discuss their development options, which officers before committing to a site, to ensure their needs can be met and ensuring the development suitably and successfully integrates into the environment. The council is fully committed to freedom of worship in the city. Moving forward, a new local plan policy on community facilities within neighbourhoods, including places of worship, is being drafted and ready for consultation. Further engagement will take place with the community on this, including all faith groups. This will be an opportunity for the community to express their concerns and aspirations." So that was councillor Afzal's response. So now shall move on to a further response from myself, which meets the community area of the question that was asked. The council is very proactive in its support of faith communities. Having actively supported the then Faith Forum, we worked with our faith communities to establish a signed faith covenant six years ago in the summer of 2018. We have actively sought to work with all faith communities, we have consulted, discussed and listened to emerging needs. For example, the Muslim community, we have taken into account changes in burial times and grave capacity, to name a few. We have a council, signed, posted grant funding and celebrated their individual and collective work in sporting communities across our city, especially during Covid, where our faith establishments collectively supported our communities. The sport that was given by faith establishments has been recognised and acknowledged by the council. As the Chair of the Faith Covenant Group, I am proud of the sport given by this authority to faith communities by elected members and officers, and we are always open to enhancing the dialogue and mutual understanding between faith communities, the city council and to the partners. The freedom to worship is a vital part of our democracy, and this city is fortunate to be home to those of very many faiths and indeed of no faith. In Preston, we have 16% of Muslim community, with 26 listed mosques across the city in different wards. We are a city of sanctuary, and our faith communities play an important role in the support those coming to Preston to escape persecution and oppression. The council fully recognises its duties under the Equalities Act. I am proud of all the churches, mosques, temples, gudwaras and other places of worship in Preston, established by our vibrant and diverse faith communities, and I will continue to actively dialogue and champion the numerous benefits that our faith communities bring to our welcome in diverse and cohesive city of Preston." Thank you, Mr Mayor, that's the end of the question.
Thank you councillor Khan. Both responses to Mr Nakuda's questions will be sent to him.
Yes, they will.
Thank you. That now concludes questions from members of the public today. Can I thank you for co... I don't need to do that. An officer will now escort you out, don't need to do that either. Item five. Hang on. Questions of Cabinet Members and Chairs of Committees and Representatives of Outside Bodies. Okay, I've got McMahon, Witten, Dwyer, Jewel, Bell, Hull, Varty and Nick Ball, is there any I've missed? Oh, boys. Yeah, I've got them, I think. Right, can I have the question from councillor McMahon, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is for councillor Henshaw. We know the climate jury has recently come to an end and they've made the recommendations. I was wondering if you could give us an indication of how this process is going to go forwards now and take forward all of the good work that they've put into the climate jury?
Got which button to press, then?
The question is for councillor Henshaw. And the climate jury has recently completed their activities and made some recommendations, and it would be great to hear the next steps in the process for how we're going to take forward those recommendations on climate change, climate action.
Yeah, thank you, Neve, for that question. The climate jury has been an amazing experience, I've got to say. I know other cities have done it, and it's been brilliant for Preston. It's given a voice to people that we don't normally hear from. It's been truly a remarkable experience. So they concluded in April. Their recommendations couldn't be shared during Pirda, so we had a public launch, I think it was the 17th of May, when different stakeholders were present and were asked to take ownership of some of the recommendations. The recommendations, the three main themes of recommendations were housing, transport and food. And obviously, as a district council, we can't control transport and food very well, but we certainly can influence housing. So, yes, at the public launch on the 17th of May, stakeholders were invited to take ownership of bits of it. All of that now is being compiled into a report, which will come to full council next month. In the meantime, jury members are still in touch with myself and officers. They've got involved with Climate Action Preston, the Community Energy Preston Group as well, Fair Trade Preston, so they are reaching out now, and it's marvellous what's happening. We're having a launch here in the council for all elected members. You should have all had your invitation, it's the 17th of July. Please come, please meet these individuals that are truly a mini Preston, so please come and meet them, please listen to their stories, please have a look at their recommendations and just see how this ripple effect across the city will happen as a result of this jury. So yeah, and if you are SVP to your invitation, so we've got an idea of numbers, I'm sure we can stretch to get in a few of these lovely glossy booklets printed that gives you some of their comments, gives you the recommendations, but we need numbers because we're just not printing lots of them, they're expensive and they're not very climate friendly. So yeah, thank you for your question, thank you.
Have you got a supplementary question? Thank you. Councillor Witten, please. Oh. You want to comment councillor Thompson?
Is it okay to speak on this issue?
Was this one of your questions? Is this your question?
Well, I just wanted to ask a further question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just say, Mr Mayor, how wonderful the city's crest looks on your car today, so I noticed that as you were coming in, just thought I'd mention that. Anyway, the climate change issue, yeah, it covers such a broad area, and as you know, were they given guidance, the people taking up the offer of being on the climate change jury? Were they given some sort of guidance about what we can do as a council? Because it seems to me there's an awful lot of things that they've suggested, and some of them are a little bit spurious, whether they could actually legally take place like the scooter thing. So how did it work? Were they set up properly for it? Thank you.
Okay, so to answer your question, please have a look on our council website at all the different links for the sessions. So they were all given academic sessions from different professors about all the different aspects of climate change, from, you know, what flooding does, to food and farming, as well as to the environment, and across the world, how, you know, climate change is affected across the world. So they had loads of sessions from academics that if they spoke above their head or they used acronyms that they didn't understand or jargon, they were given a red card and so they had to really simplify it. So yeah, they had lots of information. They also had a full session on how does change happen from all the different community groups and from our deputy chief exec as well. So yeah, they were given lots of information, and you can see it all if you have a click on some of the links on the website, you can see what happened. Thank you.
And then just ask a supplementary?
Go on, then.
I think the idea was that actually they've got so much stuff to deal with, and we only deal with a certain amount of stuff. And my question was really about, because I think you misunderstood it, was, did we give them any guidance about what Preston City Council can do? And we could focus in on that, that was really the gist of it.
Sorry, I thought I had covered that, yeah, in the making, how change happens. They had info from Sarah, they had planning officers. So yeah, they were given a brief about actually what we are responsible for, and the stakeholders at the public launch that have taken ownership of it, that will then all be planned out, and they'll be able to see exactly who's doing what. And then we can monitor it then, can't we, and hold these different people, I won't say to account, but we can monitor what's happening. Yeah, thank you.
So councillor Thompson, can I cross you off my list now? Thanks. Councillor Witten?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question for councillor Hindle. It's about the proposed closure of the ringway for the animate works. Fully appreciate the need to undertake the works on the animate development. It's a pity, unfortunately, we couldn't have dovetailed it with the last closure. There's an awful lot of noise on social media, I appreciate that that isn't the only barometer of public opinion, but what are we going to do to make sure that people come to Preston, bearing in mind the noise and nonsense that went on last time about the road closure? And in mind, this is a Preston City Council application for closure, not LCC. And I do have a supplementary, depending on your response.
Councillor Witten, thanks. I think that isn't councillor Hindle, I think it's either the leader or councillor what? Oh, councillor Rollinson.
It's not really me, but someone asked me about it, so I sent an email. So we're going to ask LCC if there can be any mitigating, you know, changes to the road network around that stretch, because obviously one lane there is going to build the traffic up. But obviously, that is in their hands, and they recently put a bus gate nearby, and whether they would be willing to suspend that for a while, I don't know, given that it's so new, but we've asked the question.
Supplementary?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that response, councillor Hindle. The only question, I guess, is how are you going to keep the local businesses on board? Because there was quite a lot of noise about that last time, about people having to potentially shut down. Any thoughts on that?
It's a difficult one, and when counties have done major roadworks, like around here on Fishgate and Freiget, they've had a policy of not paying compensation because there's so many businesses and they're affected for so long that the cost would be astronomical, and it's just not feasible. I doubt very much whether it still is, but if there's particular businesses suffering particularly badly because of the nature of the works, obviously they need to flag that up to us, and if there's anything that we can do to influence that, we will try, certainly.
Thanks councillor Witten. Now councillor Dwyer, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question to councillor Bailey. I was really pleased to see that in the recent competition for a design of one of our new binwagons, it was a student called Danica from Archbishop Temple in Shara Green, who happened to win it. And so I was just wondering if you can take the opportunity, from councillor Bailey, to update us on the rollout of the new binwagons and when we might see Danica's design out on the roads?
Thank you councillor Dwyer for your question. So it's something I updated ONS about, and obviously for maybe new members who aren't aware of this, obviously we've recently procured some new, about a dozen new refuge vehicles. Two of the new vehicles, we've actually purchased, are rotary press vehicles, which will be used to collect garden waste. And what we thought we'd do would be a little bit creative, and we contacted a lot of secondary schools out in Preston to see if they wanted to get involved in the design of it. And obviously, what we wanted to look at is it is out as creative, Preston focused, use of colour, and it needs to be focused on sustainability and recycling in Preston. So myself, Duncan, Head of Operations and one of our technical waste officers, we met and went for about 60 or 70 designs, and we went through a criteria, we judged it, and obviously we ranked them from one to three. The winner, obviously, being that student from Archbishop Temple, and obviously what we've done is invited her down to the depot, had a bit of a press release, because obviously we've now printed her design on the actual, the refuge vehicle. And on top of that, they received a voucher from Waterstones, courtesy of the actual vehicle manufacturer, they've got an Amazon tablet, and also a nice Parker pen as well. So that vehicle should now be on the roads, so hopefully you should all keep your eyes peeled and you'll sit on the road soon. Thank you for your question.
Supplementary? Thank you. Sorry. Councillor Jewel, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to councillor Freddie Bailey.
Councillor, first, thank you for responding to my email, which was expressing my concerns around the traffic assessment for the development on Ashland Park. But I do have a follow up that I would like to just highlight here in terms of what measures are Preston City Council taking? Potentially with Lancashire County Council on parking on the side streets? And as per the transport assessment, to complete the full travel plan?
Thank you for your question councillor Jewell. So in terms of the designing of Ashton Park, obviously we've had to, you know, take a lot of consideration in terms of the size of the car park because at the same time, we didn't want to take too much of the green space on Ashton Park. But at the same time, we wanted this car park sizable enough so then when it's obviously busy at peak times, obviously people using the park, people using the cafe and also people using the Ash Turf pitch will be able to park there. So mitigate those parking on the side streets. Obviously, these studies were done, obviously as part of the planning documents, which I'm assuming you've obviously had sight of. Obviously, we worked very, very closely with obviously our officers and obviously the architects as well. And obviously working closely with their rights as well. So we've constructed that balance between having a sizable car park, not too big so it doesn't impact as lot of the green space in Ashton Park. And at the same time, making sure that it doesn't affect the residents nearby. So hopefully we won't have too much problems with people using the park and parking on the side streets.
Supplementary, yeah.
Thank you very much councillor Bailey. The source of my concern was that within that transport assessment, it actually made reference to three pitches. And within your response, you had highlighted that that wasn't a policy of the council. You then made reference to Cassidy and Ashton having made an all pitch worst case scenario for the traffic assessment. Now, having looked at the planning documentation, my understanding is that it was mode transport that actually undertook that assessment. And I can't actually find the full worst case scenario assessment. Could I ask if you could forward that to me, please, so that we could make a look at that in some detail? Much appreciated.
Yes, I can do. I guess also as well to add, obviously one thing that I did mention on the email as well is particularly say the nature of, you know, say football, not every sort of football team does arrive at the same time. So hopefully that will mitigate some of the issues with everyone arriving at the same time. So obviously the people who are based at home or who are based at the grass pitches and also the Ash Turf facility there might get to the football pitches an hour early so they can set up. The away teams might only turn up, you know, half an hour before the game. And obviously then while leaving, the home teams usually normally put the nets away, which does take time. And obviously I did mention in the email that, you know, if one particular team hasn't played very well, then the manager might ask them to stay behind a little bit longer. And obviously different lengths of times, sorry, for different age groups, football times obviously is slightly different. So obviously if they're younger, they don't play the full 90 minutes. So again, it does mean that there'll be sort of a steady flow of people leaving, obviously during those peak times as well. But yeah, in terms of that document, I can get that to you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Bell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question's for the leader. I read in the news recently that the iconic Preston phone boxes are soon to be refurbished at long last. Given that these plans were first floated in 2014, that's over 10 years ago. Can the leader reassure this chamber that the refurbishment works will happen quicker than 10 years, please?
Indeed, we're all committed to this. Obviously we have a pandemic which got in the way of many things. My understanding is we'll be involving local artists, local businesses. It's good news and I'm glad you agree. It's good news for the city and the community. I've been frustrated as well at the amount of time this has taken. What I will do is I'll get an update. The indication I have is that we expect to hopefully have it have them back because they need to be taken away and the new artistic expression and then brought back. We hope to have them in the city by the end of the year. So I will provide you a written update on that. Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to Anna Hindle as the cabinet member for culture and the arts. And I just wondered if she can please give the council an update on the summer programme of events for Preston, if she would.
Your councillor, it's just really very briefly to hope that you all know about this B flat. It goes up until the 8th of December. It has very popular events to all constituents. And I wondered if you could all make an effort to attend at least one or two of those events, that would be much appreciated. And obviously promote it to your local groups. And then just also, the Met tent is returning to Ribbleton this time from the 8th of July to the 4th of August. And the programme's only just come out for that. It's got some really brilliant free events. Some aimed at children, some for adults. So again, it's for everybody. So that's it really. Just please try and make an effort to attend.
Councillor Hall, is there a supplementary? Councillor Varty, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to councillor Rollinson to just ask councillor if there's any updates on the Guildhall or the Guildhall foyer, please.
Thank you. It was February when I last spoke on this here. So three months is not an awful long time for the things that need to be done at the Guildhall. There are significant works that need to be done to bring areas of that building online for, as a safe and usable space for events. We are progressing the Guildhall foyer, which we will get available for events. Obviously, we've used it a couple of times already for elections and a MERS event, but for more public sort of commercial events, it needs to be set up in a certain way and we are progressing that. We're progressing the solutions for the Charter Theatre and the main hall. It does involve buying scaffolding and putting it in, which is obviously a process which involves procurement and construction. We're quite hopeful that the scaffolding in the Charter Theatre may prove part of the solution, which would be really helpful. We really need to wait until the scaffolding's up in the main hall to get much closer to that huge ceiling to see what the solution is because there's asbestos too up there. So we are certainly making progress and I know a lot of people are interested in this. I do believe that the arts and culture scene in Preston is really vibrant, as councillor Hindle's just told you. Through the work of this council and lots of independent creators and promoters in Preston, if you can't find anything to do on the weekend in Preston that's arts based, then you're not looking hard enough.
Any supplementary councillor Varty, no? Councillor Rick Bow, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A question to the leader councillor Brown. Could you please update us? I believe the Radio Two are holding an event in the park. It's been some time since they held the last one. Could you give us any detail and the benefit that it brings to our town?
Indeed, we're all absolutely over the moon as the Labour Council's securing this event. So coming to Preston on the 6th, the 8th of September, we have Sting. Never been performed in Preston before, I believe. Pet Shop Boys, The Manics, Sugar Babes, many, many more. And it'll collect you with the spirits towards the end of summer. And as a Labour authority, we want to attract events like this to repurpose our local economies, both Martin and Anna said, you know, the new economy of Preston, it's going to be based around culture and expression, not necessarily retail as we saw traditionally. And additionally, we're going to have a unique Preston community wealth building flavour, connecting local businesses and suppliers in. And working with the BBC to deliver training sessions for local young people in production and broadcasting. We want to see a lot more of this. I was at the Radio One event in 2007. This was some time ago. I went as a young man and now as a middle aged man, I'm going to the Radio Two event. Seventeen years ago it was, the Radio One event. And obviously this is pretty huge for Preston. We've not had this level of artistic genius coming. We want to see a lot more of it and make sure we actually build on this to benefit the whole community and have a lot more of a creative field to Preston city centre and beyond and Moor Park as we go forward in future years and months. Thank you.
Any supplementary?
Commentary. I hope the weather holds out and I hope we don't have to wait another 17 years for the next event.
Councillor Bell, yes, please.
Yeah, councillor. Thanks, Mr Mayor. I've just got a supplemental question for the leader on that. I was at Radio One's big weekend back then as well as a young man. It was quite disappointing. I just wonder if the council was involved in the setting of ticket prices for the Radio Two event. I was away at £64 a ticket. I'm a family of five. There was no concessions for children, which made it quite prohibitively expensive. So you said you wanted to do it for all the community. To me, I felt a bit priced out by it. So just wondering if you had any involvement in that?
It is extremely well reasonably priced. I mean, I think the Rolling Stones charge about £400. I think Bruce Springsteen about £200 and odd. Taylor Swift's on too. I was tempted to see Taylor Swift, but very expensive as well and I'm probably a bit old for that as well. But I mean, in terms of the pricing, it's actually reasonably well priced for an event to that and the level of artists. I think it's very competitive compared to the Lyddon Festival as well. And we have obviously fed that to Radio Two, but ultimately we can try and influence, but they have a set agenda around ticket prices. What we are doing is making sure that the community and local businesses and food outlets and promoters can be involved in this as much as possible, really. But we do think it's a really good deal, the kind of artists we're getting. Thank you.
Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is for councillor Khan. As I'm sure we're all aware, there's been a spiking antisocial behaviour in many parts of Preston, including my ward in Gronkotten. One of the main issues appears to be use riding scramblers and high powered e-bikes in a reckless, dangerous and intimidating manner across public green spaces and footpaths, including football pitches when they're being used. I would be interested to hear what the council is doing to work with partner organisations to address these growing issues.
This is one that councillor Bailey, under his brief as portfolio holder, community safety would be able to respond to.
Yeah, thank you very much for your question. Yeah, there has been an increase in antisocial behaviour. And actually, just a very, very quick quote, actually, because I maybe suspected this might come up. Shirley, who is our new head of service for parks development, she actually sent me an email when I've been, you know, talking about antisocial behaviour and stuff. And obviously she's previously worked in other councils in the Parks Department. So she's actually said to me, and this is a quote, the level of antisocial behaviour and criminal damage parks has experienced in the last couple of months is on a scale that she's never experienced before. Now, we're hoping that this is just maybe quite a rare sort of phenomenon, a bit of a trend, but you know, it's something we have trying to be dealt with. Obviously, I've been on Radio Lancashire to talk about it because we've had on Haslam Park. Pickney bench has been moved into the stream that flows through Haslam Park. I think it was on Haslam Park, again, when we set up the tennis court and refurbished it within the first couple of weeks, the gate was was again damaged for that. We've also had like a number of vandalising incidents in Moor Park as well, where some trees were cut down as well. So obviously what we have done is we've tried to ask, you know, for witnesses, see if anyone could, you know, potentially report that to police, obviously report that to the Parks Department. Obviously, one thing we've tried to do is we've tried to mitigate some of that. So one of the things we've done on Moor Park is when we've had the bowling greens, the two bowling greens that have been refurbished, they were damaged. So what we've tried to do is put sort of more steel fencing around it to try and prevent that. I guess if someone really tried to get in, I guess they would get in, but it really does try to prevent that. In terms of the trees that have been cut down, they will be replaced. And we see our Parks Department work very, very, very hard to try and correct the damage that's been caused. Obviously the park bench then, which luckily wasn't damaged too bad, there was a move back. CCTV cameras were installed overlooking the Haslam tennis court. Hopefully that will obviously deter people from vandalising that entrance again. And hopefully if people do do it again, we'll be able to report to the police and obviously do more. So obviously there are some of the examples what we've tried to do to fix it. Obviously, as part of our last budget, we obviously increased the expenditure so we can have another antisocial behaviour officer, which I'm well aware we're sort of recruiting to now, which hopefully will be able to work with partners and obviously the police to try and reduce antisocial behaviour, not just within parks but across the city. And also as well, obviously with the new police crime commissioner, we are hoping to work sort of a better working relationship with the police crime commissioners to deal with issues that more working class communities face. So hopefully that does answer your question. And I guess I'm welcome any supplementary questions. Obviously, if there's any individual instances, I just stressed that everyone needs to report it to the police on the Lancashire County Council website. Or if there's maybe ongoing issues, you know, please come to me and obviously I'll say what I can do. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Ward, do you want anything supplementary?
No, thank you.
Councillor Adair. Answered it. Great. So councillor Rutter. Oh, sorry.
Do you mind if I just add just one other thing to the comment? I should have mentioned it beforehand, actually. Obviously, it's been in the press a little bit recently. On Moor Park, obviously the cricket wickets have been vandalised as well on two separate occasions within the space of a couple of days. Now, obviously I used to play a lot of cricket back in the past and the setup at Moor Park was actually quite unique because if you want to play cricket, more than likely you join a cricket club and obviously it can be quite expensive, you know, equipment and stuff. And obviously there's not a lot of cricket facilities around in Preston. So the actual setup of Moor Park is actually quite unique, you know, it's very, very grassroots level. And obviously it's a shame that they have been vandalised. Obviously, I know a fund me page, I think it was set up, but I think it's only got about £1,500 quid and it's about £8,000 to replace that. Now, obviously, I know we've got a report about spending money on our parks and that couldn't be included because it's, you know, we haven't got budgets for that and also it wasn't really included because it's only recently been damaged. Obviously, as someone who comes from like a cricketing background, I've also managed to just today make contact with someone within the ECB to see if we can access some funding within them because it's about £8,000 per Ash Turf wicket. And obviously those cricket players who are, you know, very, very grassroots, don't have a facility to play on now. So we contacted the ECB to see if we can access some funds and hopefully they may be able to help us restore that. And as far as we're aware, they actually, the ECB are looking to fund in some very similar grass wickets, sorry, artificial wickets over the east of the county. And hopefully, it's something they do support, so hopefully due to the lack of resources in Preston and facilities, hopefully that's something that they'll support back and update you when we've got some information on that. Sorry for interrupting, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Bailey. Sorry councillor Rutter, did you have a question?
I didn't, Mr Mayor. I was waving to make sure councillor Adair had been seen.
Okay, thanks. No more questions. We'll move on to item six. Thank you. Item six is approval founding member of Preston Digital Cooperative. Sorry. Item six is a report on an approval request for the council to become a founding member of Preston Digital Cooperative. This report is a late report, however, I am accepting it as an urgent item as UK SPF contributions set out in the report which are intended to be transferred to the co-op are time bound. Councillor Brown, I believe you're moving this report.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much. Quite excited about this particular initiative. It was reported at council last year that there was a digital inclusion study that was commissioned by our shared prosperity money, which identified that there's huge issues in Preston in terms of access to digital access skills and opportunities. So we need as a council to have to deal with the digital divide, which is a priority for our administration. So what we're doing is we're working with community broadband network to establish Preston Digital Cooperative. And the next step is to seek approval for the council to be a founding member of Preston Digital Cooperative. The report also seeks to help to do this by becoming a member of the cooperative network infrastructure as well. So this will be a new cooperative enterprise that's in democratic ownership, that's majority public sector led, which the council will be a member. So it will significantly advance our community wealth building agenda. Digital exclusion does lead to social isolation and economic deprivation. So what we're going to do with Preston Digital Cooperative is improve digital infrastructure by providing devices and free wifi in some areas of Preston for residents alongside free digital skills training. So a big part of what this transformative Labour Council is doing is supporting newer enterprises like this, which put more fairness and democracy in our communities and local economy. And then want to work in those communities and gain popular support for some of these things that we're doing around having a more democratic local economy. So whether it's Preston Digital Cooperative or the plunging to community land trust or the traveller community at the housing scheme in Leyton Street, or new worker owned businesses won by women to retrofit houses in Brookfield. Or Community Energy Preston or the or Community Energy Preston, or the £120 million public regeneration of our city centre in city ownership that supports local jobs and local businesses. We really want a local economy that works for everyone within Preston. So the decisions required are at 2.1, paragraph 2.1, Mr Mayor. This is a big step forward, putting £250,000 into this and it's going to really expand access within our communities to residents that need access in terms of broadband and making sure they get the benefits of being online. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brown. Excuse me, can I just note that the report does state that the council meeting it was to be considered at was on the 20th of June. However, this is an error and should read today's date. Have we got a second for this report? Councillor Wise, thank you. Do you wish to speak on it? Reserve the right to speak later. Are there any questions from anyone? Right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favour of this report, please show. Thank you. Any abstentions? Anyone against? Karen, thank you. Item seven is a report on the permanent pavement licensing regime under the Leveling Up and Regeneration Act 2023. Councillor Bailey, are you moving this report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this report seeks to amend the current proposals for considering licences for the invitation of pavement cafe areas. So for those who aren't aware, obviously, as a council, sorry, for operators of businesses selling food and drink, they must apply to the council so they can put removable furniture out on the pavements and on the streets. So this obviously is looking to change that proposal. Now, the government on the 31st of March 24, have obviously changed the licensing. So this moment in time, or sorry, previously, there was £100 for one year for obviously people, for businesses and operators to apply for licence to the council. However, what this report is seeking to do, obviously in terms of government changes, is allowing councils to extend the licences for two years. And obviously, increase the cap for the first time applicants for £500 and then for the renewal for £350. Now, obviously, with the government, obviously announcing this sort of a little bit later, and obviously as well with it being summer, so obviously a lot of the cafes and obviously your businesses obviously putting out outside furnitures. Obviously, without being a council recognising the difficult time our hospitality sector has been through, what we propose in this report, even though we could increase it to £500 this year, we're going to keep that cap at £100 for our council, with a review to amend in that maybe going forward. And one of the reasons why I've done this is because there are a number of businesses, obviously, who've already applied for that licence with us, but there's a number of businesses who haven't, so we will be chasing them upon that. And obviously, what we think is, it is unfair for us to chase them up and then at the same time put in that licence fee up. So what we're proposing in this report is to keep it at £100. Again, it recognises the difficulties that a lot of these businesses have gone through recently, particularly the cost of living crisis, change of lifestyle, and also as well the energy bills which have massively affected the hospitality sector. So what you're proposing is keeping exactly as it is for this financial year, with a review then potentially changing it for the next financial year, which will then come to full council in November. So that was all, Mr Mayor. Happy to take any questions on it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Have we got a second for this report? Thank you councillor Brown. Anybody wish to speak on this report? Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I can just very quickly say, I think this is something that's very important. I think it's a brilliant example of the council making a choice to support a number of our licensed premises. As the Chair of the Licensing Committee, I'm very welcome to see this approach. As you'll see in the report, the financial implications of it are very limited. This is something positive that we can do at a very limited cost to ourselves. And it's evidence, of course, that we are helping businesses out of the difficulty through the pandemic, but also on a very hyper local level too. You may have noticed so many premises now, particularly on Friergate, now choosing to have these pavement licences. It's really adding to a very positive vibe and atmosphere to that part of the city after a great deal of struggle from the overrunning roadworks there too. So this is a really positive thing and I think licensed premises will take this as a positive from the council. So I do hope to be able to support it.
Thanks councillor Dwyer. Anyone else got anything to say on this? Can we move to the vote, please? All those in favour? Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Karen. Item eight is a report on the financial outturn position and performance report for 2023-2024. Councillor Rollinson, will you be speaking on this?
Thank you. Before anyone wonders why I've got so much paper and an iPad, the iPad's been faulty this week, so I'm still not backing it properly. Before Carol starts giving me bad looks, but do have some notes on this from the treasurer, which are better than my notes. I should say before I use them that the finance and legal team do an incredible amount of work at the moment with all the projects we've got ongoing and we've got the city deal report later. There's just so much going on, so much to do. We have outsourced some legal work here and there where we needed to get things done. And they're almost on top of the statements of accounts, which over half of councils are not. So it really needs recognising just how much work finance or legal are doing. And they're still understaffed. We still can't recruit to some of those jobs due to the skill shortage, so it has to be said. The council has achieved a revenue under spend of £391,000 after allowing for slippage of £2.263 million. In recent years, there have been fluctuations in year therefore it is difficult to forecast with any certainty when we set the budget. The favourable variances include the rates for short-term treasury investments. They are the highest since 2008, of course, the financial crash. Utilities costs have been reducing. Vacancy savings have increased. However, the cost of using agency staff has offset that. There are a number of cost increases such as paying for construction maintenance costs across our projects, which have risen rapidly, increasing bad debt provisions on investment property rents and increased charges for income collection. We have a report later below the line, which looks for new software, new contracts to help deal with that too. The finance team will review the outturn variances as they work on the next forecast. Slippage in closing elements of the schemes delayed due to capacity and also those we have received external funding for, but the work is only planned to commence in 24-25. We have been managing to set aside some treasury investment returns to help with the £5 million target to help reduce the borrowing of the animate scheme. So our financial position will look very different in 12 months' time when we get the other side of, you know, we're going to pass the city deal report. You can see how significant that is, the animate borrowing, especially when we get the other side of some of the capital projects. And then in a year or two, we can see where we are better financially for the future and plan ahead. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rollinson. Is this seconded? Thank you councillor Brown. Anybody got any questions on this report? Councillor Analyst, please.
Well, not really questions. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Not really questions. It was just a few observations, if I'm allowed. Just to say that there's a hell of a lot of good work gone into this. And, you know, if you read the report that's been presented to us, it really looks quite optimistic and quite promising. And my observations are there's an awful lot happening in Preston and over the next few years. And I just, you know, will constantly want to be, and I'm sure my colleagues, reassured that finances are in play and the safety nets are there to ensure that these schemes come to fruition and everything happens. Just a bit of a tongue-in-cheek aside, though, reading the achieving Preston's priorities, I just think it's a great pity that there's nothing in the Preston priorities for anywhere sort of north of Sherragh Green and what have you. You know, it'd be nice to achieve a couple of priorities in the rural areas and the northern parts of our city. But really, other than that, we are happy to support this report.
Thank you councillor Analyst. Can we all vote on this report now? All in favour, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item nine is a report on the VMware Enterprise License Agreement 2024 to 2027. Councillor Desai, will you be moving this report?
Yes, I will be. Mr Mayor. So this report is for a request to enter into new contract with Softcat, who are a VMware licensing solutions partner. So this is for the council's enterprise agreement renewal. The contract will be for a period of three years, will be procured through an approved framework agreement. PCC currently has a VMware enterprise agreement for one year, which ends in June 24. VMware is a brand supplier name, essentially stands for virtual machine software. We've used all our software. We've gone over to the cloud, so we need the virtual machine software to access the cloud. This software is fundamental to the running of the council's business. Without the licence, we would not be able to run our virtualised servers, desktops or our disaster recovery solution. The last contract was procured in June 24 after a successful tender exercise through the Kent County Services Framework. VMware, in the meantime, have been acquired by Broadcom and we're reviewing the licensing models. We have a view to moving to a software as a service, so as a paper use service, which is why a three-year agreement was not available at the time. Since Broadcom bought VMware, they have increased the prices by 33%. So the cost of 368k for a three-year period, so that's 123k per year. Our current existing budget is 92k, which means there's a shortfall of 31k or 93k over the three-year period. This unfunded budget increase is unavoidable in facial inflationary cost pressure for a key piece of corporate software. The recommendation is to approve an unfunded budget increase of 20k for 24-25, then 31k for the remainder years, 25-26-27-26-27 and 27-28. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Have we got a second for this report? Thank you councillor Brown. Anybody wish to speak on this report? Ask a question about it? Thank you. Can we go to the vote, please? All in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Item 10 is a report on the member champion allowances for 2024-25. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
Okay, thank you. We don't necessarily agree with everything that the independent panel recommend, but for the sake of, you know, it is an independent recommendation. So there is some concern about setting our own allowance level, so we are going to pass this. There is a small part of the report we didn't like where it says that the member champions should do an annual report to council, that's fine, but that it should also go to the panel, which seems very odd. So we're happy to send a report to the council from the member champions. But we're not answerable to the panel for our work. But we're very pleased that they undertake the work they do and make the recommendations for us. So if we could just amend that or note that, we will accept the recommendation on the level of allowances. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rollinson. Have we got a second? Thank you councillor Brown. Anybody got a question? Councillor Potter?
Yeah, I was hoping to not speak at all this council, so what a shame. But no, we have a standard kind of practice within our group that you can't pick and choose what of an independent report you want to take. So I understand you say your Armed Forces Champion or all the other champions aren't answerable to that panel. But I remember when LCC was going through this, what the panel wants to do is make sure there's an adequate sense of work being done to be able to justify those expenses. And to be able to do that, they have to see a report of what that member champion's done. So I actually disagree with you. I don't think you should amend this. And if you do amend it, unfortunately, I will certainly be voting against because I think what the panel is asking for here is just enough information to make an informed decision. So and basically, I don't believe that we should be amending an independent panel into what we should be paying ourselves. And I hope most people will agree with me in that, even if councillor Rollinson doesn't. So I will be voting against the amendment and trying to keep the independent report as is.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Wise?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wanted to support the amendment that councillor Rollinson's moved to this report. I don't think it's appropriate or that the panel should be judging whether our member champions are working effectively or not. I think that is for us as a council. As a cabinet member, I don't actually have to report on what I'm doing to the panel. And yet they've determined the allowances that we get as cabinet members. So I think it seems a bit unfair that somebody, that the four champions who aren't getting a very huge amount of money are actually going to have to report on their work when the rest of us don't have to. So that's why I'm opposed to, I support the amendment and I oppose to what councillor Potter has just said. Thank you.
Councillor Potter, just a moment. You're trying not to speak this time, weren't you? Well, you've spoilt that. Thanks councillor Wise. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I always see the remuneration panel as an advisory panel to the council. I mean, yes, maybe in theory you'd like to go along with advice from an independent panel, but it doesn't mean to say that you have to. We are the authority here and we are the elected members who have that authority to commission a report and we can reject parts of the report if we don't particularly like it. So I'm quite happy to support councillor Brown's, councillor Rollinson's amendment going forward. I don't think we, I think I agree with the Labour group. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Anybody else got anything to say? Yes councillor, Ward?
As a school teacher, obviously, we have an independent panel who puts forward pay proposals, which the Conservative government has frequently for the last decade been throwing back. And of course, every time they have, quite rightly, the opposition and the Labour Party, the Lib Dems have been standing up and saying, "What's the point of an independent panel if you're not going to follow it?" I just think as a newbie sat here at the moment, listening to this for the first time, I do find myself reflecting back on those decisions of the teacher panel and the decisions that we all set, I think, in return that, you know, if you're going to have it, you should follow it.
Thank you councillor Ward. Anybody else? Oh, sorry councillor Brown.
Yeah, I'm happy to support the amendment. It seems the Lib Dems take any opportunity, especially at election time, to make a political point and overexaggerate a little thing. We're keeping the level of allowances that have been recommended. That's the reality of it. So obviously, that's the main part of it. In terms of processes, we encourage members to speak with the panel every time. Very few often come forward, especially from the opposition. So within that, there's an opportunity to talk about the work that we do, what it entails, what it might do in the future to the panel. So that is a process that we've used. We just feel that this formalised mechanism is something that is slightly outside the remit. And my understanding is the council does set the remit of the independent panel. So I'm happy to move and support the amendment, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. No one else, right? So now the amendment, as I see it... So now the amendment, as I see it, we're taking this report with the proposed amendment, and the amendment is on page 112, and it's Roman numeral five. Each member champion should prepare an annual report to full council, setting out the work which has been carried out in the financial year 2425. That's the amended version. Are you happy with that, councillor Rollinson? Right, we'll go to the vote with the amended version. All those in-
I will take a write a reply. I've got, it's my report.
You want to write a reply?
Yeah. Just to point out that this point that the Lib Dems are making is not even a point because the reports will go to council, they'll be in the public domain, they'll be available to everybody. So the panel will be able to see them too. It's not really a point, but it's a word change, but we'll go ahead with it.
Thank you, councillor Rollinson. Councillor? Rutter, please.
Sorry, just if they're going to see it anyway, why, sorry, if they're going to see it anyway, why do you object to them seeing it?
Oh, sorry, you count at all. Sorry, that includes you, councillor Potter. All right? Right, we're all going to vote on the amended version of the report. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Right, the report is carried with the amendment. Thank you. Item 11 is a report on a nomination required for Preston Sports Forum, and I believe that the Conservative group was to nominate councillor Bell to the forum. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report? And does your group wish to submit a nomination also?
So Labour group have nominated for both positions councillor Coopland and yourself, councillor Crowe. Councillor Crowe.
Thanks, I'd forgotten. So we have three nominations for two places. If no one wishes to withdraw, we'll have to go to the vote. Yeah, so the Labour nominations are myself and councillor Copeland and the other nomination is councillor Bell.
Point of order, surely our nominations stand until there is an amendment proposed by someone. Well, that's how council reports work, surely. This is my report, I've nominated two people, that either that's it or there's an amendment. No one's proposed an amendment yet. We would then, we would vote on the amendment, then vote on the original, that's how it works, isn't it?
Okay, councillor Rollinson. Right, councillors, the vote is going to be on councillor Rollinson's two nominations. It's the report with those two nominations, isn't it? All those in favour of the report with the two Labour nominations, please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you, councillors. Report's carried. Item 12 is a report on a change in the time of meetings for the overview and scrutiny management committee. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
So the committee have asked to change the start time just for, you know, for their purposes to meet a little earlier and the official meeting will start a little bit later. I do look forward to the further detail this report mentions on how scrutiny is going to operate going forward, but we're happy to agree to this.
We've got a second for this report. You want to second it, can? Thank you. Any speakers on this report? Yeah, councillor Jew, yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's just a question about the chair and vice chair training. I was just wondering if in the interest of inclusivity, that that could be turned into a teams event for those that can't attend in person. Thank you.
I'll have to find out for you, it might be down to who's providing it, but we can find out.
All right, councillor. Right, go to the vote, please, on this report, moving the ONS time to 10.30 to allow training before. All in favour? Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, councillors. Item 13 is a report on a need for an additional cabinet meeting. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
So this is a government requirement, it's a bit of an odd thing, really. It's only like a four-page report to government on what we're doing and how we're spending our money or how we plan to not spend too much and things like that. But I don't remember doing this before. It's new, it's new. So the deadline didn't really fit in with our cabinet schedule, so just going to have a quick meeting and put that forward.
We've got a second for this report. Thank you, councillor Brown. Any speakers on this report? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Report's carried. Item 14 is a report on a change of date to an audit committee meeting. Councillor Rollinson, please.
So I believe this is designed just to give that a little bit more time for those involved in this, to get everything ready and make sure, hopefully it can go through on that new date.
Is this report a seconded? Councillor Dwyer, be seconding it. Thank you. Anybody to speak on this? Thank you. All in favour, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Report carried, thank you. We're getting through this steadily, aren't we? Item 15 is a notification of changes to the membership of committees. Are there any changes to be reported? Councillor Brown?
Yeah, in terms of the Labour group, Mr Mayor, so councillor Morgan will be replaced by councillor Parton on the audit committee.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Nothing. Councillor Thompson, have you any changes? Thank you. Item 16 is a notice of motion submitted by councillor Sawar, entitled Mental Health. Councillor Sawar, can you move your motion, please?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Can anyone hear me? I'll keep this brief, given our packed agenda. So, yeah, so I'm honoured, obviously, to present this motion today. It will be Preston City Council's first motion on mental health. This motion is about recognising the critical importance of mental health and reaffirming this council's commitment to it. Now, we all understand that mental health is essential not just for individuals' wellbeing, but for the health of our families, our communities and our employees. Now, this council has been proactive in this area and will continue their efforts to raise awareness, reduce stigma and enhance mental health support for both their employees and the wider communities. This policy also ensures that this council maintains its momentum, collaborating with the Preston Health and Wellbeing Partnership, to continually improve their mental health programmes, to work with local organisations, work in multi-faith groups, work in Lancashire County Council and Lancashire Teaton Hospital to provide preventive mental health support. So ultimately, this motion highlights this council's ongoing initiatives and dedication to improving mental health support, along with increasing its efforts within the BME communities and the deprived communities, and especially with the younger children as well. So I hope everyone today here can support this motion and I'm happy to obviously answer any questions or any emails about this. So I'm sure there'll be future mental health policies as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sawar. Have we got a second for your motion? Councillor Dwyer, do you wish to speak on it?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor, very quickly.
Thank you.
Firstly, I just want to say thank you to Sully for bringing this motion forward and also for his work in the last year as our member champion for mental health and suicide prevention. And as the incoming holder of that role, I want to second this motion and just reiterate from what councillor Sawar has said, the real importance of the role of the Preston City Council within mental health and wellbeing, both across the community, but also to ourselves and to our staff and colleagues here at the council and so in this chamber, town hall and across our services too, and fostering that positive mental health and wellbeing. This motion's a really important chance to refocus our efforts, particularly when it comes to multi-agency working. As Preston City Council, we are one of those anchor institutions across our city who can bring together community groups, organisations, services from other providers and agencies all across Preston and indeed Lancashire. And also, I would just like to add too, that within this motion and the remit of this motion, we are also looking at self-harm prevention and suicide prevention as part of this multi-agency approach to mental health and wellbeing. But I'm very pleased to support this motion. And again, I thank you councillor Sawar for bringing it and for your work in the last year.
Thanks, councillor Dwyer. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I fully support her. As someone who actually works on a global level on workplace mental health, 25% increase in depression and anxiety since lockdown, 12% on suicide, and local authorities and central government have the highest rates of sickness absence. There are people who are taking their own lives in the public sector and we have to do way more than we're currently doing in managing workplace pressures and demands and also making sure that appropriate systems are in place. So happy to support.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Wise, please.
Yeah, I'd like to support this motion, particularly refers to the fact that many victims of domestic abuse actually experience mental health issues. And it's important that agencies recognise this and that GPs don't simply donate medication, not that I'm against that, by the way, but actually also make sure that victims of domestic abuse are then referred to appropriate support agencies because we need to be looking at the root of the problem rather than just dealing with, you know, the effects of it. And it's worth noting that actually 10 women a week take their life, their own life, because of domestic abuse, which is actually more than the numbers that are killed, that are murdered every week. So it is a really, really important issue from a domestic abuse perspective, and I do think agencies, multi-agency working is absolutely critical for ensuring that victims are supported. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wise. Councillor Jewell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and very supportive of this notice of motion as well, and thank you to councillor Sawar for bringing it forward. But I just have one clarification. So what I like about this is the multi-agency approach, so how we can address mental health issues and their consequences within Preston. What I also like about this notice of motion is your reference to support to Preston City Council employees as well. To that end, can I just clarify that mental health first aiders, who it is a course, it's a two-day course that needs to be undertaken, that we will also be sponsoring Preston City Council employees to become mental health first aiders and helping signposting others who need that signposting to the appropriate services and support.
Councillor Jewell, please. Give me a second, councillor. You can come back to any of these, councillor Sawar, at the end, okay?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am completely in support of this motion, so thank you very much for bringing it. In some other work, similar workplaces, mental health support does go a bit further, so I didn't want to suggest an amendment, but I was just thinking for the future, friends of groups or allies of different mental health conditions or neurodivergent conditions can help staff to help each other and signpost each other to areas of support that are available locally. So I would welcome if you could consider that for the future and see whether that would be something that would be fit for Preston City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jewell. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'll be very happy to support this notice of motion. It seems to me that there's a mental health epidemic around the country at the moment. One of the things that we tend to do, we tend to focus in on particular groups, which is okay, but it's also to be remembered that this affects everybody regardless of class, race or anything else. I mean, personally, I know two people who, people talk about suicide in the young, and the two people I know who took the lives have been me and a year older, so my age and older. So it is prevalent throughout our whole society and I'll fully support your notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Councillor Sawar, do you wish to come back on anything? Can I just state that your motion, like councillor Jewell was saying about, it doesn't mention any commitment to funding the mental health first aiders. And it doesn't commit resources, this motion, but it can be looked at in the future. I mean, this is a way forward, I think. Thank you. Councillor Sawar?
Yeah, just reiterates that same point. Thank everyone for your comments. And yeah, we do have a system in place where we do support training. And I believe there was a training session, not held, but was going to be held previously about two, three months ago, but with the elections coming up, we had to postpone that. We are looking at maybe doing training, not just councillors, but also internal employees as well. I believe there's four mental health first aiders currently at Preston City Council. So again, I'll introduce, I'll introduce one or two of them as well and we'll see what we can do, but we can certainly look at the funding. Again, we do have our own internal EAP system, system allowance, internal system, where you can look for support from internal employees as well as councillors. So again, we can revisit those questions afterwards, so it shouldn't be a problem. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say it's been an honour serving in this role as well, and I know we talked about independent panel earlier, you can show them this motion as well, so they know we are doing the work. So thank you. And Connor as well, I think he'll do a fabulous job. So yeah, wish him all the best. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councillor Sawar. I'd just like to add, Preston City Council, last year, I was here with the mayor, not as deputy, just as a councillor, they invited councillors along and they had a health and wellbeing day for staff, employees at the town hall. And last Friday, I attended as mayor Preston Sports Day at UCLAN and they had rounders, five-a-side football, they had cheer bowls and a number, and they encouraged teams from all different places. And we had a couple of teams from Preston City Council. I know Mick, one of the gardeners, was in one of the teams that lost at rounders, but but there is ongoing looking at health and wellbeing of staff, considering we've cut the, staff numbers have been cut from around 1,200 in 2020. considering we've cut the staff numbers, have been cut from around 1,200 in 2010 to under 600 and struggling to recruit. Sorry, just mentioned that. Now, on councillor Sawar's motion, can we go to the vote, please? All those in favour? Please show. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Motion's carried. Item seventeen is the leaders' report. Councillor Brown, do you wish to speak on this report, which is for noting only? Thank you councillor Brown. Item eighteen, special urgency. Item eighteen is a special urgency decision. However, there are none to report to this meeting. Item nineteen, the next ordinary meeting of the council will take place at 2pm on Thursday, August the 22nd, 2024, in the town hall, Preston. I'm thinking we should have a 10-minute break now so you can all refresh yourselves and pay attention to what's left on the agenda. Okay, so we'll back at quarter to four, please. Item twenty. Now we need to consider passing the following resolution, that the public be excluded from this meeting during consideration of the following items of business on the grounds that there is likely to be disclosure of exempt information which is described in the paragraphs of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972, which is specified against the headings to the item, and that in all the circumstances of the case, the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing it. Are you all happy to agree the exemption and move to part B? Thank you.